7:30, so I think we'll get going. We've got 33 participants. And I'll put up the agenda in a second. And we can have a look at it, but I guess what I'm going to say in terms of my welcome today is a bit more than the usual. You know, as amateur astronomers, we like nothing better than observing the night skies. However, since our last meeting, horrifying events have happened that must require us to take a pause from looking up and instead look at each other and look at ourselves. And I speak, of course, of the ongoing discoveries of hundreds of indigenous children in unmarked graves and the slaughter of a Muslim family in London. One of the stated values of the R A S C is enrichment of our community through diversity. And Edmonton is no stranger to bigotry, and so it's now appropriate to reaffirm that the Edmonton Centre welcomes all to our meetings and our club, and we condemn racist behavior of any type. I don't know if there's anyone else who wants to say anything at this point. If you, the floor is yours, Jay? Then we'll have Colleen.
No, I'm just applauding the statement, Tom.
Okay. All right, I'm going to put up the, the agenda. Can everybody see that? So this is, uh, this is the, the agenda for tonight, so not sure if Sukrit has joined us yet, but she will be doing the minutes. We'll have Warren Finley doing the Black Nugget Lake Observatory update. Jeff Robertson will be doing his best Walter Winchell imitation and news from space. Alistair, we're doing noctilucent clouds and a number of current events. John Stolti will give us observer certificates. Abdur will do astroimaging favorites, a bit of a variation on a theme. And then I'll talk about our last council meeting and what we are reopening plans for, for our activities. Are there any additions to the minutes? No? Okay, and I will unshare. Oh, we've got eight, no waiting room. Okay, I'll just wait for Sukrit to join us. Sukrit, are you, are you with us?
Yes, I am. I apologize for being late.
That's okay. We just finished going through the outline of the agenda and we're actually, you're up to do the minutes, if you don't mind.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Um, all right, I can share my screen possibly?
You you can now.
Oh, perfect. All right, and oh, I have to open it up first. Just bear with me. Sorry about this. All right, so I have it open here.
Before you start, Sukrit.
Yes.
I picked up a message from Colleen. Colleen, did you want to say something more to what I had said earlier? Is she still with us?
Colleen said that she was clapping.
Okay, fair enough. All right, go ahead.
Um, okay, so here. Can you guys see my screen here?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So here are the minutes of the meeting for May 10th. I apologize, there was a little bit of a confusion. Alistair reached out and said that that the completed copy wasn't on here, so this is the completed copy and it is now on the, uh, on the OneDrive for, for everyone to view. So this is what we went through. If there are any, are there any errors or omissions that anyone can probably find if there are any?
I don't hear any.
Okay, then in that case, I would like to make a motion for the minutes of the previous meeting, um, May 10th, uh, as posted on the OneDrive.
To be approved?
Be approved.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second here?
Abdur seconds.
Abdur seconds, okay.
Perfect.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, Carrie.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, we're gonna, I'll throw it over to Warren. Let's see if I can see him. There he is. Warren, do you need the screen?
I do indeed.
All right, you have it. Go ahead, Warren.
Okay, there we go. So yeah, I wanted to, I guess, give more than an update really. I guess Tom had said I had about a half hour, so I can give more than an update and I'd like to give, I guess, many club members haven't perhaps heard the how we got to where we are at Black Nugget Lake, and so I'd basically like to give a brief history of the observatory out there and, and what's been done over the years. It's been actually a fairly long time since we first started this project, so I'd like to go back to the beginning, I guess, and really when things first started, which was almost 20 years ago now, so surprisingly, it was in the early 2000s that I was a fairly new R A S C Edmonton Centre club member and I felt that one of the things the club could benefit from and which the club didn't have was a large telescope at a dark sky site, so on my own initiative, I went out tromping around at various Crown land sites, looking for a possible place that we could maybe do such a thing. And after visiting quite a few sites, it was in August 2003 that I was coming back from the Saskatchewan Star, Summer Star Party and I saw the sign on Highway 14 saying Black Nugget Lake and I hadn't realized I hadn't been to that site yet and made a mental note that I should go check it out. So a month later, I came back with my telescope. This was back in the day before we had SQM meters to measure sky darkness, and so I was doing all my site assessments with limiting telescopic, telescopic limiting magnitudes, which is how back in the day we used to you know, determine the sky darkness. And so I took my telescope out and did a telescopic limiting magnitude, uh, and I was getting something in a 16 magnitudes for my 12 and a half inch scope, which was pretty good, and so it seemed like a pretty darn dark site, as expected. So the site seemed quite promising compared to many of the other sites I had visited. And so that winter, I explored the, the property on foot, looking for a possible place that we might have an observatory. I had done the same at various other sites, but this one was one of the most promising because on the right here is a, is a light pollution MAC map from back in the day. I think this one's 2006, uh, but it shows the little location here where Black Nugget Lake is. It's kind of a compromise between closeness to Edmonton and far enough away to get pretty dark skies. Obviously, you want to go further away from Edmonton, but you know, having a site three hours away doesn't really make much sense because we can barely get out there. On the other hand, you know, a half hour from town is just too light blue. So for most of us, it's about an hour, hour and a quarter to get out to Black Nugget Lake, which is kind of the right compromise between sky darkness, pretty darn dark skies, dark enough for most purposes, uh, but still not too far from town for, for getting out there. So it was in fact, at the first Northern Prairie Star Party in 2004 that it kind of solidified in my mind that Black Nugget Lake was a place that I thought would be the best compromise between ease of access and, uh, sky darkness. So it was that October 2004 that I put forward a formal motion proposal, actually formal proposal to Edmonton Centre Executive Council to get permission to go ahead and approach Beaver County for a permission to lease the site. Beaver County actually turns out to lease the site from the Alberta government, so it's a three-party deal. Uh, but Beaver County was the first ones to approach to get their permission to see if they'd even allow us, because it's a campground and we didn't, I didn't know if they would even entertain the idea of having an observatory out there. So, um, that proposal was approved by Executive Council and it was the following February when I went out and gave a presentation. I think Orla Arquist was, Arquist was president of the R A S C at the time and he came out with me and, um, supported me in that presentation to Beaver County Council. So I went before the council out there at Beaver County and proposed this idea. And at that time, they actually voted and gave unanimous approval to proceed with site lease discussions. And then, uh, the following month, R A S C Executive Council mo, made a motion that a committee actually be formed to establish a dark sky observant site at Black Nugget Lake. And at the time, my life was really too busy to, uh, continue with, uh, being point man on the project and Dave Robinson kindly stepped forward at the time and agreed to chair the committee. And that summer, then Roman joined the cause, Roman Munich joined the cause and this was also before we had easy access to satellite photos. We didn't have Google Earth. And so if you wanted to, uh, you know, get a, what a site looked like from, from air, it was aerial photos. So Roman, of course, flies and he went and took his plane and flew over the site, took some aerial photos to help us try and figure out where we might put a telescope on site. Um, and in summer 2005, we sat down with Beaver County and negotiated, you know, where we might put the, the telescope, because it's a campground and they had ideas on where things could and could not go. So that was Roman, uh, and I think Dave at the time, Dave Robinson leading that charge. When I was out there in the wintertime and subasquini that summer, I had picked a few spots. One of my favorite spots was this one. This is a shot over on the southeast corner or port part of the, of the, uh, of the place, very wide open, up on a plateau, nearly 360 degree views with very little obstructions. Uh, this is my first choice for a site, but, um, it would have required us bringing in a road about a third of a mile of there's an old road, um, but it would have required basically putting in a third of a mile of upgraded roading, which of course would be prohibitively expensive and, uh, really was unfeasible. So instead, this is one of Roman's aerial shots from 2005 and you can see I've circled, uh, the location where the observatory was decided in discussion with Beaver County where we could put it. And pretty much everything there is the same as it, as it is now. You can see the cook shack and the roads and all the campsites are pretty much unchanged, pretty much the same as today. But of course, the little white circled area is in fact where we now have the, uh, the observatory site cleared, gravelled and and infrastructure put in place. But this is what it looked like in 2005 before that any of that was done. And so it wasn't until 2006, September 2006, another year later, the ground was broken. Beaver County in, in, in working with the R A S C got some contractors out there. You can see some of the machinery. I think Rick, Rick Brown took this photo. Cleared the site, leveled it and then brought in gravel. The following April in 2007, the site was gravelled and power was actually brought in. There was no power on site at the time, so I think it was a joint effort, R A S C Edmonton Centre together with Beaver County, I think jointly paid for various aspects of the infrastructure. And in 2007, January 8th, we signed a 10-year lease with Beaver County to use the site. So we, I gave us access during the winter months from October through April and then May through September, Beaver County had use of the site for camping. And in the next couple of years, really all that happened was, um, Dave and Roman went out and with some other helpers built um, the bathrooms that are out there now. So those went in. I think Beaver County actually poured concrete in for the, for the Biffys and then Dave and Roman put in the building. And then nothing really happened for the next four years and I'm calling this the Dark Ages. And if I can bring up, maybe this will work, maybe not. I'll give this a try. I'm going to try and do a so I went out there during these Dark Ages and took a 360 degree panel, see if this works. Well, I'm gonna have to share a different screen. Um, so I'm gonna have to go and bear with me. So I've got to share a different screen, I think. Life is so much simpler before Zoom. Okay, so here.
People always had problems with presentations before Zoom.
That's true. That's true. Uh, okay, so can you see that panel or that, that view?
Yeah, I think you're gonna have to unshare and then reshare maybe.
Can you see this or not?
We're just seeing your quick time right now. Welcome to Quick Time.
Oh, man. So I don't know.
Get connected.
I'm sharing it, but, uh, oh, here we go. Here, how about this one? Okay, let's try this. I'll do multiple shares. Okay, want to try that. Can you see that?
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay. So this is, this is a 360 degree panel, so you stitch a bunch of photos together, take a bunch of photos quickly and stitch them together. So this was back in, in the Dark Ages, I said. Very still night. You can see my vehicle there. I'm on a Black Nugget Lake. This is a super still night and in fact, you can see the stars getting picked up in the, uh, can you guys see the stars in the lake being picked up? It was quite amazing night.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, so and then if you go up, uh, looking up, this is pretty much what the Milky Way looks like from on site. If you haven't been out to Black Nugget Lake, it is quite a dark side, a little bit darker and black, but uh, but this is what the Milky Way looks, it's pretty realistic view of what the Milky Way looks like out there. And so it's pretty darn dark. Um, if you look to, this is looking east. Uh, the eastern horizon has very, almost no light pollution. There's a little bit from, this is Riley, the little bit of glow from Riley, not much of a glow. If you go south, very good. This is looking now south. You can see my telescope there. I had my 10 inch out that night. Looking south, very little light pollution at all. Um, if you look to the southwest, you start to get a little bit of glow from Camrose in the southwest, maybe it goes up about 15 degrees or something, a little bit of glow from Camrose. And then if you go to the east, so now this is looking, uh, northeast now, this is out looking northeast. You start to see Edmonton. So the site is actually a reasonable amount south of Edmonton, so the glow, the glow from Edmonton is really in the northeast and you can see the this is Edmonton over here in the north.
Northwest.
Sorry, sorry. Yes, thank you, thank you. My, my, um, I'll blame Zoom mirroring, so I'm getting my card. No, but yeah, so, uh, it's pretty darn dark site. You can even see the Milky Way there, um, setting in in the, in the northwest from Edmonton there. So pretty dark site. Let me go back to where I was. Back to where we were, okay. So hopefully we're back to where we were. Yep. Um, right, so nothing happened until, uh, for about four years there on site, except some of us would go out and use the site. We had permission to use the site in the winter months and some of us did do that. Any club member could go out and use the site. There wasn't a lot of usage at the time because all that was out there was just, you know, gravel site with a bit of power. So, uh, in 2013, then Roman bought this, uh, old shed. Well, no, no, new shed. Now it's old, but it was then new. You can see it on the back of the trailer there, hauled it out. He and, uh, and Dave and Ray Nelson went out and built the shed that's there now. So storage shed was put on site in 2013. And then again, nothing happened for another couple of years. Uh, in fact, in 2014, the Black Nugget Lake Observatory Committee was disbanded when Dave Robinson retired and moved to Victoria. So this is a shot I took out there at that time in, in that period. And again, really all that happened was members were using the site for observing and astrophotography with their own telescopes. It was in 2016 then, in April, that, uh, things began again to happen out there in terms of infrastructure. First off, the Black Nugget Lake Observatory Committee was reconstituted consisting of Rick and Susan Brown, myself, Kent Martin and Roman Unik. And that committee quickly decided that we should move the 18-inch club telescope out there. This is the scope that's been around since the 80s, I guess, with the club. It's been refurbished a couple of times. Uh, you can see a picture I took of it outside, onsite out there. It's a dob, 18-inch dob with a Barry Honored mirror, mirror. Nice scope, classic, um, you know, 1980s, 1990s dob telescope. And so we put that out there, uh, Roman put some wheelie bars on it, so it basically sits out in the sea canyon, that shed that you saw. It sits there fully assembled and when you go out there, all you have to do is open the shed, attach the wheelie bars and just wheel it out, um, and use it. So it doesn't require assembly to use. It has a ponce. So you can uh, have tracking like that if you want. Um, and so it was, it was put out there and dedicated in 2018 in memory of Baron Arnold, who had passed away shortly before then. And so it was, uh, named the Barry Arnold Memorial Telescope. So that sits out there and onsite. It's been there for about almost five years now onsite and various club members have used it since then. Uh, soon thereafter though, uh, we really went big with being alone. That's when, um, discussions with Bob Drew, uh, came to a close in terms of him donating the 32-inch mirror. There had been discussions over a period of time about this concept and it was in November that Bob Drew officially donated his 32-inch F4 Baron Arnold mirror. This is a low-expansion glass mirror. Uh, would have been $125,000 if purchased new. So Bob Drew donated that. He had planned originally, and many of you may remember, oh gosh, more than 20 years ago, Bob perhaps giving some presentations to the club about the 32-inch scope he was building. And he got a little ways down that road, but it never ended up uh, being completed. Uh, his health got in the way and then he moved to Victoria and he realized that it was never going to get done. And at that point, he decided to donate in discussion with myself and Roman and a number of others, Luca and, um, various people, uh, he decided to donate 32-inch to the Black Nugget Lake Observatory cause, which really gave us a shot in the arm in terms of, you know, having a large scope out there. So that was kind of the initiative that then really triggered uh, a flurry of activity since then. We started applying for funding. The R A S C coughed up, you know, 20 grand to get going on putting together the 32-inch scope around the mirror. Luca joined the, the, the committee in, in that month. And Roman began his construction of a 32-inch telescope around that mirror in January 2017. And of course, $20,000 is not enough to, uh, put together a 32-inch scope with an observatory on site. And so we began applying, uh, to grant agencies. I think we put in a total of 16 grant applications to various organizations over a period of a couple of years. And it was in, uh, some of those were successful, most weren't. Um, but one of the donations, it turns out, was, uh, a donation from the University of Alberta. And many of you may remember the observatory that was out there at, at the Devon site. They are in the process of decommissioning that since it hasn't been used for quite a while. Um, and there's a nice 14-foot ash dome. Ash domes are professional quality domes that many professional observatories use. There's a nice 14-foot ash dome out there, um, and they offered to give it to us. And so these domes are like, to buy one would be tens of, many tens of thousands of dollars. Uh, and of course, you never have enough money when you're doing these, uh, projects. And so we decided to accept that donation, which meant though, that we somehow had to fit this 32-inch telescope into a 14-foot dome. So if you do the math though, this is an F4 mirror and a 32-inch diamond mirror, you end up with, um, a telescope that is not going to fit uh, in a 14-foot dome unless you do some folding of the optical path. So we decided at that point to do a folded Newtonian design on the telescope, which allowed us then to fit this telescope into that donated dome. And so you can see the dome here on the back of a trailer. Um, out at Devon was this old Atco trailer. We decided to pick that up as well. That was being donated. We hauled it out the site and that was going to be our visitor center. Um, so that was brought on site and applied for some more funding from the R A S C Edmonton. The trailer though, turns out to, after having paid to get it hauled out to Black Nugget from Devon, turns out it was full of mold, uh, which we didn't know at the time, didn't notice at the time. And so we ended up having to donate that. A farmer, local farmer said, oh, I'll take that off your hands. So he got rid of it for us, took it out. I don't know what he did with it. Maybe he had chickens in it or something. I don't know. But then we had to go and buy it and a trailer. So that bumped up to our cost by 21,000. There's a number of these cost overruns when surprises came along. That was one of them. It was March 2018 that the, uh, renewal on the 10-year lease was, was, uh, signed. It took us almost, uh, a year to get that process approved. The second time around for the second lease, the Government of Alberta realized that they actually were involved with the land. It's actually Alberta government land, which Beaver County leases as a campground. And so we ended up having to get Beaver County and the Alberta government both to sign off. And the Government of Alberta was extremely slow in, on their end of getting it signed off, but we did manage to get that done. And that had to happen before we could get a development permit. So we had to have everybody signing off on the lease before we could do a development permit. Development permit was approved in June of 2018 to go ahead with building outs onsite. And then of course, once you have a development permit, you gotta get a building permit. Uh, so that was put forward, uh, by the, by the Black Nugget Lake Observatory Committee and approved by Beaver County in July of 2018. So we then had permission to actually go on site and build. Uh, so we started refurbishing the U of A dome. The U of A dome that was donated was, um, actually built in the 1960s, so it needed some refurbishing. Fortunately, we also got one of our biggest injections of external funding. The Government of Alberta, at the time it was the NDP government, they, um, had these programs, these community foundation grants. They gave us um, a grant of almost $40,000, which was a nice shot in the arm to this project. And enough to get going on building. So we actually broke ground in August of 2018. You can see the pile driver, the screw, screw piles going in here with the pile driver. Those screws go down, those screw piles go down about 25 feet below ground. This soil is extremely bad. Uh, it's all overburdened from a coal mine back in the day, back in the 60s. And that overburden, it turns out to be very poor stability soil. And so, uh, the screw piles had to go far deeper than we had hoped. And that of course led to cost overruns. The screw piles are much more expensive than we thought they'd be. But, uh, we did get the screw piles in and, uh, also got the concrete poured. So you can see this was in late August 2018. The Atgrade Foundation, Concrete Foundation for the Observatory Building was, was poured as well as the telescope pier. This is in the middle here is the telescope pier. Like seven tons of concrete or something for the telescope pier. That also was more expensive than we had hoped and planned and budgeted for more cost overruns. At that time, the dome, um, was, the dome walls were fabricated. Uh, this was Roman's initiative. He was leading the charge here on the dome. We were building a round building. Uh, none of us had built a round building before, so Roman was leading that charge. And you can see Kent and Roman here building one of the panels, uh, round partial circular panels that were going up and you can see them getting installed out here on site. And so those round walls went up that fall. We bought the new trailer that's now the visitor center out there. We had a lot of several snowfalls before Thanksgiving that delayed the work on site, but we did manage to get the walls up. You can see the misses taken in the fall of 2018 and the dome went out and got put on. So we had, we got, we needed to get the dome on before winter freeze up, right? So October 17th, 2018, the dome was lifted in place. You can see the lift happening here, the dome getting dropped onto this round structure. So once the dome was on, we could work up there in the winter and November, we put in the floors partially. You can see some of the floor structure going in here. And, uh, Roman, of course, continued to build the scope. You can see here, this is on the right here. This is Roman standing beside the the azimuth and altitude mount, the azimuth mount on the bottom and the altitude mount here. It's an Altaz telescope. Um, the altitude mount here, you can see the size of the mount here. It's a very large fork needed, of course, to handle the size of telescope we're talking about here. So while working on the telescope that winter, uh, Roman nearly burnt his garage down. He was doing some grinding, I think, on the mount here with an angler grinder. And the sparks ended up hitting, um, some combustible paint or something in his garage and flames and he narrowly missed burning down his garage. Unfortunately, he didn't burn down his garage. The azimuth mountain fork went out for blasting in March 2019, the same month that Alan Hobbs joined the Black Nugget Lake Observatory Committee. And Alan was great at helping out onsite, building out onsite. And May and June of 2019, we pretty much finished the observatory floors inside, put on the side. You can see the bottom here, some of this soaked there, putting on the siding on the outside of the walls. And the interior stairs within the observatory were put in place. July of that year, these exterior stairs, you can see on the right here, the exterior stairs, which went in that summer. And two days before our building permit expired, we got the building inspection passed. And we then went into electrical permit to wire the place up, got the permit, and worked on the wiring. And numbers went out there a number of times and did the wiring, got it all roughed in. And we passed the first roughed-in electroinspection inspection in November of 2019. And you can see a picture down below of where things were at in November of 2019. The observatory in place, visitor center in place, and the existing shed, which houses the 18-inch telescope, still there, of course. The troubles with the mount, the first of several troubles with the mount that Roman was building occurred in late December 2019. Roman discovered when he put the mount together that the bearing, the azimuth bearing was exceptionally difficult to move. Way too much torque. Didn't know if he'd done something wrong or the manufacturer had sent something wrong. Finally discovered, he discovered that the azimuth bearing was, had some errors from the manufacturer. And they shipped him a replacement at no charge, fortunately. At this point, we were still needing more funding, so we had some more applications. I think we're up to 23 grand applications at this point. We brought in another $5,000. Success rate, by the way, on the granting was 43%, which is pretty darn good for those of you who've written grants. External funding success rate, though, was only 19%. So most of our funding came from the Edmonton RSC. But we did get a few big grants, as I mentioned before, $40,000 from the Government of Alberta and a few other smaller grants from Beaver County and Argus National. And then many donations from, in kind from various companies. The inside walls for the dome were then cut and painted in February 2020 in Jerry Shilby's garage, and we put those in that winter. You can see Luca here painting the mission gray, oh no, mission control gray. It was the color that was chosen. And Kent here cutting some of the boards in. So this is inside the observatory onsite. Lots of snow we had to deal with to get into the site. You can see Jerry here shoveling snow and Luca in the background there. And me with some of the screw guns there. And then, of course, the pandemic hit in March 2020. And we were actually shut down, as many of you know, when the pandemic hit. There was a lot of closures going on, and we were shut down. We were told we couldn't go onsite. All, all the provincial parks and government land was closed. So we were shut out for a little more than months. But we got permission to go onsite because we said, "Look, we got to deal with maintenance out there, you know, check for leaks, and we need to continue building." And they said, "Okay, well, you can go out there as long as you wear PPE." So here we are with some of our primitive PPE. Luca and I fixing the leak. There was a leak out in the domes. We were fixing that out there. And that summer and into fall of 2020, we got the electrical inspection done. The final inspection was passed. Basically, we finished off the observatory building and grounds. You can see a picture of the inside. This is before we painted these bays. These bays are now painted gray, but it's pretty much basically the interior is done by then. And you can see the work crew that went out here, wearing PPE to do all the gravelling around this washed rock that was placed around the grounds. Site gets pretty muddy without this, so we put in nice washed rock to keep the mud at bay. And so it's pretty good, pretty good grounds now. The grounds are basically finished. Observatory is finished, visitor center is done. It was also that fall, we figured out how to do remote control on the golf course lights. Many of you may have heard, Coal Creek Golf Course has these huge streetlights, two of them, that just spray light everywhere, super bright. Quite annoying when you're out there, when you're mostly aesthetic. They don't really screw up the view too much. But it's quite annoying when you go out onsite and drive up to the gate, and there's this mass of streetlight behind you blasting away. Fortunately, the observatory is blocked by all these trees, and you can't really see those lights, but still is annoying and aesthetically very unappealing. So we contacted the owner of the golf course, and he was very good to work with, quite happy to work with us. And Luca went out and worked with him, and a number of us were involved. And installed a fairly simple fix, actually. It's like Home Depot smartphone app that you can hook up to this controller that allows you to control the lights from your smartphone. So Luca and I have control of the lights. If you want to shut them off anytime we can. So it's pretty cool. We got rid of that light problem quite, quite nicely. And then in this year, 2021, the Facility Operations and Procedures Manual for Black Nugget Lake was created. It's like a 120-page document that we put together and a committee put together. That'll go up online at the Members' Area. If you go to the BNLO tab here at the community, edmontonrsc.com, you can find a number of documents related to Black Nugget Lake. I don't know that we put that manual up there yet because we're not ready to open yet. But that will go up onsite, and those of you who are curious can go look at all the operations procedures, aspects of Black Nugget Lake. Of course, to use the site currently, any, any RSC Edmonton Centre member can go out and use the site. There's a gate that you need to have access to the code. But other than that, it's a gated north gate to get in for our winter access. So we, we don't have access right now because it's summertime, it's camping season. But from after the October Thanksgiving weekend through to the end of April, RSC Evan Center has priority access. We're the only ones accessing the site during the winter months. And that's done by entering the code on the north gate and then driving in. So if you want the code for the north gate, any Edmonton RSC member can have the code if they go to this website and click on the rules for Black Nugget Lake Observatory. You have to agree to a number of conditions, et cetera. Send an email to this address, and then we'll phone you with the code to the north gate. Throughout this whole time, I guess, now it's, what is it, 2017 to 24 years later, since Roman started the scope, Roman continues to, with the scope build and has been working away at that for more than four years now and continues with that build. And that's where things pretty much are. As far as opening with the 32-inch scope, the date remains to be determined. Really, it depends on when Roman finishes the scope. That's really all that's left. The site's ready to receive the telescope, and we're just in waiting mode for Roman to finish the telescope. He's really the only one working on the telescope. And it's up to Roman as to, you know, when he can get that done. But once that telescope is done, we'll drop it in to everything that's onsite, ready to go, to receive the scope, and we'll get going with having a 32-inch scope out there. So all operator levels, there's four operator levels that the committee came up with for using the telescopes. If you want to use the telescope, you have to be what's called an operator of the telescope. And there's four operator levels, all require an Edmonton RSC membership. You have to be a member of the Edmonton RSC to operate the telescope. Level one access, we call that simply you have access to the north gate. We give you the north gate code, access code, and you can go onsite. And then bring your own, bring your own telescope, whatever, bring your own gear. There's, there's power out there. With power pedestals, you can use the site if you want to plug in your telescope or not, whatever. But that's what level one access gives you. Level two operators then can operate the 32-inch telescope. It's called the UDT telescope, named after Roman Unick, Bob Drew, so Unick Drew Telescope. That's the name that the committee came up with. So the 32-inch UDT, you can operate it if you're a level two operator. But that would be only if directly supervised, supervised by a level three or four operator. And you would not be permitted to open or close the telescope on your own. That requires level three access. So level three operators can open or close up the visitor center. That's the heated building that we have onsite. So it's a nice facility to have when you're out there in the wintertime, be able to warm up onsite. So that requires level three operator status. And level threes can operate, open, or close up the UDT telescope only if a level four operator is onsite. So level threes can open up and use the telescope as long as there's level four onsite. And the level four, the highest level, then requires or allows you then to open or close up UDT on your own and, and also allows you to act as a supervisor when we do run public events out there. And so that's an engineering drawing I did of the situation that's up, the dome that's out there. Some of you saw this, I think, a year ago. This drawing, but you can see the screw piles going down 25 feet. And then the Atgrade concrete foundation, supported also by screw piles. Those are only going down, I think, 12 feet or something. And then the dome stairs, telescope, and the telescope here, the folded Newtonian design under construction by Roman as we speak. So that's what I wanted to say. Many, many, many people and many, many, many groups involved here. I've listed some of these here, a number of very generous funding donations from individuals of their time, companies with in-kind support, many, many, many volunteer hours by the Black Nugget Lake Observatory Committee, which I've listed here. And a number of additional volunteers have donated many hours as well. So lots of work over the years. Photo credits for some of the photos I showed. And that's what I wanted to say.
Well, thank you very much, Warren. And you're quite right. I don't know why I put down Observatory update when I specifically asked for a history of, of the BNLO site. But maybe it's because that's typically what Luca does when he presents this to council, council meetings. It's always an update. But really amazing, probably the most successful committee of council we've ever had, I would think. Are there any questions for Warren about his presentation?
Folded Newtonian design, is that one that the light path goes central to the, to the whole thing? Or is it one where the light path is angled out to the side?
No, it comes straight down. It's just basically an additional mirror in the, in the light path. So there's a primary mirror. The light comes in, hits the 32-inch primary. It then goes up to a, I guess you'd call it a secondary, but then at the other end of the telescope, and then comes back down to a tertiary, which is angled and brings it out the eye piece. So it's still a Newtonian. You look, you know, from the standard Newtonian, look from the side of the optical path. But there's a tertiary mirror, just a third mirror in that basically folds. It's still a straight optical path, but the third mirror causes the folded design. I think there was one question, Tom. Somebody in the chat room says, "How will members get these levels?" Yeah, so that'll be well explained in the Operators' Operations and Procedures Manual that we'll put up at the Members' Site. Relatively straightforward set of procedures. It's what you'd expect, basically. As long as you're an RSC member, you agree to a few minor conditions. You get the gate code access, then you're level one. And then, and then you work as a level one operator for like six months, just so we get, get to know you. And, and then you apply to be a level two, and there's some conditions on a level two, things like you have to get a letter from somebody on the committee or an executive council member, et cetera. And then you become a level two. And then, once you've been a level two for six months, you can apply to be a level three. You have to undergo training. Once a year, we're going to have training onsite for all members who want to and operators who want to. And once you've got that training, then you can apply to be a level three, et cetera. Another six months as a level three, you can apply to be a level four, and there's some conditions on that. And so they'll be well described, what you have to do relatively. It's, it's what you'd expect. Just, we want to make sure everybody's conscientious and careful with use of the telescope, and they know what they're doing, and we know you. So those procedures in order to become an operator at a certain level will be put up on the Member Area website when we get to that point, hopefully. Hopefully next year, we'll see.
And I will say that the operating procedures look good. They still haven't been approved by council. So if anyone has any feedback after reviewing them, please send along your feedback to Warren or to, or to council, and we'll, we'll take that into account.
Warren, there was a follow-up question on the chat.
Is this scope purely visual? Is that, that one you're talking about?
Yeah.
Is the scope purely visual or dot, dot, dot? Yeah, no, at this point in time, the plan is to open it as a purely visual telescope. Yeah, and you know, if, if, it, it's an Altaz mount. So it's not set up for, you know, in the sense you need a D-rotator. So at some point, if somebody wants to, you know, put forward proposals to fund adding in, you know, D-rotator and things for astrophotography, it, it would be possible. Roman has carefully made sure the design would be amenable to putting in, you know, a CCD or a SLR, whatever, into the optical path. He's actually designed it for having one side of the telescope you can look through, and then if you flip, he's got it, spent, I don't know, a long time, Roman, you should talk to him about it. But he designed it so you can actually rotate things around and flip it over to another optical path where you could have some kind of imaging system set up. But we're not planning for that. This thing has been bloody complicated enough to make a visual telescope. But the option to do imaging will be in place in, for the future someday if somebody wants to round up the funds to, to make that actually happen. It's, it's, it can happen and could happen with sufficient funding. It's not going to require a redesign of the telescope or anything like that. So, but I mean, we have things like the 17-inch scope out at Telescope World of Science that, that could perhaps be maybe used solely for astrophotography, I would think. The plan, though, currently is visual.
Suppose we could park an all-sky camera there, do that remotely. That might be interesting, too. Anyway, all right, fantastic. Are there any other questions for Warren? Well, great job. I was expecting a great presentation, and we got one. Thanks very much, Warren.
Thanks, you're welcome.
All right, so we'll now go on to news from space with the inimitable Jeff Robertson.
Thanks, Tom. Have you made me a co-host?
I'll do it right now.
Okay. Okay, so this is the, the fourth one of these I've done. When we kicked this around in council, I had no idea how much work these things involve, however. So I'm looking at May 2021, where I've scoured the news for appropriate crumbs of space-like news that would fit into this short presentation, of course. With the summer break in September, I'll have something for June, July, and August. But it'll only be really big stuff or stuff that I could make a joke out of, because it's still got to be only around about 13 or 14 minutes long. So let's go here.
With the march of China's Qianhe Space Station car module on April 29th, the world has watched with concern that the 30-meter-long first stage of the Long March Fire Booster Rocket would land in a populated area. Tumbling end over end, the booster could have come down anywhere on Earth between 41 degrees north and 41 degrees south latitude. Fortunately, on May 9th, the booster re-entered the Earth's atmosphere and landed in the Indian Ocean near the Maldives. Its re-entry was seen from the Arabian Peninsula. The demise of the booster was reported on Chinese media, who provided a simulation of its last moments. In other news, China launched a cargo ship to its new Qianhe Space Station on May 29th. The 10.6-meter-long Qianzhou II was carried into orbit on a Long March 7 booster. The cargo ship docked to the core module launched in April. A three-person crew is expected to be the first visitors to the new station in June. Several launches will be needed to complete the station. On May 2nd, the four-person crew of the Dragon spacecraft Brazilians prepared to depart the International Space Station after 167-day mission. Assisted by other astronauts, the crew are secured in their couches for the return to Earth. With the firing of thrusters, the crew dragging the space station. With the firing of thrusters, the crew Dragon departs the space station.
And copy, copy separation.
Mike Huttons are confirming what you're seeing on the screen, Dragon moving away from the International Space Station.
Dragon separation visually confirmed.
And SpaceX confirms.
Following a long burn of the spacecraft's engine, it enters the Earth's atmosphere. The fiery path of the craft is spotted from the ground. Under its main parachute, the craft lands gently in the warm waters of the Gulf of Mexico. Waiting recovery forces quickly secure the spacecraft and hoist it onto the deck of the recovery ship. The heat of re-entry is evident on the skin of resilience. The hatch is open and the crew begins to exit the spacecraft. Even after over five months in microgravity, this astronaut can still walk under his own power. I bet he wants to get up there right away again. After orbiting asteroid Benu since December twenty-eighteen, the Osiris Rex spacecraft fired its engines on May tenth and headed for home, leaving the asteroid behind. After studying the asteroid for months, Osiris Rex descended to the surface of Benu in October of twenty-twenty. In a touch-and-go or tag maneuver, the spacecraft collected samples of the asteroid itself. Mission planners were hoping to collect sixty grams of material, but may have actually collected two kilograms of sample material. On receiving confirmation of touchdown, mission controllers back on Earth were ecstatic. The spacecraft then ascended back into orbit and continued to study Benu for the next few months. Osiris Rex's seven-year mission will end on September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, when a return capsule containing the samples of Benu will be jettisoned, re-enter our atmosphere and land by parachute in Utah. On May fifth, the sixtieth anniversary of the flight of America's first astronaut, Alan Shepard in Freedom Seven, SpaceX's starship SN fifteen ascends into the heavens on a pillar of fire. To the surprise of this reporter, there was no in-flight explosions, no crash landings, no problems whatsoever. The starship rose to ten kilometers, performed its belly block maneuver on the way down, righted itself and landed on its tail perfectly. SN fifteen is expected to make another test flight in the coming weeks. On May fifteenth, the lander portion of China's Tianwen spacecraft orbiting Mars separated and began its descent to the surface. This is China's first spacecraft to explore the red planet. As this simulation shows, the lander protected by its aeroshell plunged into the atmosphere, deployed a parachute to slow its descent before releasing the lander. The lander used its own rockets to maneuver and make its way to the surface. After landing, the rover it carried called Zhurong deployed its solar panels and its instruments. This is the first color photo taken by the rover from the surface of Mars. On May twenty-second, the Zhurong rover rolled onto the Martian surface, a day later than originally planned. Hazard cameras recorded the scene. Zhurong is expected to function for at least ninety sols on the Martian surface, but it is hoped it will exceed that. On the same day Zhurong was beginning its exploration, NASA's Ingenuity helicopter, which hitched a ride aboard the Perseverance rover, took to the air for the sixth time. All was going well until the tiny craft began to oscillate in the air. These unexpected gyrations of the little helicopter could have led to a crash and subsequent loss of the ingenuity. But fortunately, it was able to land safely. Controllers are diagnosing the reason for the problem and hope to have it airborne again in June. Meanwhile, Perseverance continues with its mission. Here it observed a dust devil passing by. And these are other images taken by Perseverance this month. Finally, we traveled to Gale Crater where NASA's Curiosity rover, which landed in twenty-twelve, continues its mission. It photographed clouds made of ice crystals of CO2 high in the Martian atmosphere. I hear a certain NLC chaser in Edmonton, Alberta, may be planning a trip to Mars to document these clouds. On May twenty-sixth, a total lunar eclipse occurred. The event was seen best on the west coast of North America, across the Pacific, in Eastern Asia, and in New Zealand and Australia. As it occurred near perelune and in the month of May, it was dubbed the super-duper whole wheat flour, blood and guts moon. The next lunar eclipse will occur November nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Another month, another launch of stalling satellites to fill the space in low Earth orbit. Speaking of junk, the Canada arm on the ISS was struck by a piece of orbital debris this month. The damage appeared to affect only the thermal covering and not the underlying structure of the arm itself. Still, it is a warning of the hazards of even small pieces of this orbital flotsam. On May twenty-seventh, Science Minister Francois Philippe Champagne announced Canada will build, fly and land a rover on the moon in the next five years. The Canadian Space Agency says the unmanned craft will gather images and measurements from the moon's surface. Requests for proposals will be sent out in the coming months. This artist's rendering hints at what the rover may look like.
That's it. Love it or hate it, that's it.
Hilarious.
That's great.
And I, I appreciate that. It's a lot of work, Jeff, but we all really appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
All right. See you in the fall.
See you in the fall. Okay, so we're gonna throw it now to Alistair uh to talk about noctiluscent clouds and other current events.
Okay, I will need screen sharing, please. Hey, my, here we go. Okay, so uh, noctiluscent clouds. This is going to be a little bit about what they are and how to see them and when to see them. So quite literally, they mean night shining from the Latin. And they range from um, sort of fairly subtle, as you see in the top panel, to uh very impressive displays. The bottom panel is um, taken from Valley View Drive uh overlooking the River Valley towards downtown. So it's a very wide panorama. So this thing was taking up easily a third of the sky, uh, so it can be very impressive. Now, uh, we only see these during uh the twilight times. And so you think, well, you actually know why those clouds can be lit up. Uh, for example, these ones here, anybody looking at this image would just say, oh, well, the sun's just over the horizon there, hasn't quite risen or it's just set. And uh, so those clouds uh can see the sun and they reflect the sun's light down to our level where uh the sun has not yet risen or has just recently set. So the same basic geometry applies to noctiluscent clouds as well. Except it's just that little bit more extreme. So this is a diagram to scale uh where the Earth is uh in the bottom half of the diagram with this gently curving uh pale green arc. Uh, we as observers are over here on the left. The horizon is this black line extending out. And the noctiluscent clouds are in a layer up, eighty kilometers up. Uh, often uh, the diagrams that we see for noctiluscent clouds are not at all to scale and can be a bit uh either deceiving or uh a bit hard to follow. So hopefully this one uh that actually shows things to scale makes a little bit more sense. The sun is off to the right. So imagine north is off to the right and west is into the page. And uh, as you um, uh, look uh up, essentially the layer eighty kilometers away is, well, straight up eighty kilometers and then it does a generally slow arc uh over uh to the right, to the north. And the sunlight in this case, uh, it's about seven degrees below the horizon. So anything below this orange line is in shadow. So we are in shadow. Um, and all of the clouds, uh, the normal clouds uh down at the ground, well, ground level, the lower part of the atmosphere below ten kilometers. It, it's also all in shadow, but this layer up here is in direct sunlight uh from the sun, which has uh yet to set on them. And so uh, that is uh where um, uh, the, the basic geometry of uh, the noctiluscent clouds. So they can range from even past the zenith if the sun is just, just below the horizon. But as the sun gets lower and lower, uh, this orange line tilts up and up until it's one point, you only get just a little bit of cloud or space up at eighty kilometers still in light. So just a pretty picture here of uh some of the um, what a very nice bright display can look like. It's uh this sort of electric blue sometimes of the clouds that are uh very noticeable. Normal clouds lower down are dark because they're in the shadow of the earth. So how high is eighty kilometers? That's, it's, it's one of these, it's a number that we're comfortable with when we're dealing horizontally driving uh to places, but uh going straight up, it's kind of hard to um imagine. Uh, the troposphere, which is where all the weather and normal clouds lie in this orange zone. Planes fly just above the troposphere. So the, the high-flying plane, if you're gonna fly to Toronto or to uh Tokyo or London, uh, they're all at about eleven or twelve kilometers up. And so eighty kilometers is a long way higher than uh what a plane flies. Uh, so we also uh at that level uh can see Aurora can penetrate down. Meteors uh happen, burn up at the eighty to fifty kilometer level. Satellites, the lowest ones are three hundred. The International Space Station is at four hundred. So there's actually a lot of stuff going on in this in-between zone where uh we don't actually uh know a lot about it because uh we don't spend a lot of time in there with measuring instruments. But the uh air there is very thin, but it's enough to uh uh contain these wonderful clouds. So here's a neat electric blue silver fox, as I like to call it. Just nice little uh pattern. Sometimes uh it's not part of a larger display, but just a little patch of cloud. So how do clouds form? And uh, a lot of them uh clouds down uh in the troposphere in the lower layer next to uh the Earth uh form water droplets first, but these clouds are ice crystals, just uh very similar to the uh cirrus wispy clouds and mare's tails that you might see um uh floating across the sky. Uh, all of them uh start with a particle of some kind in the middle. Uh, and uh water vapor can uh condense out either into liquid first and then it freezes. Or uh water vapor can actually attach right on to um an ice-like particle and become uh a nice particle. And then those particles um bump into each other uh and grow, or they continue just taking uh water vapor from the atmosphere and grow directly as ice crystals. And the particle sources uh for noctiluscent clouds happens to be meteor dust. Uh, and uh also uh comet dust. Uh, they've figured uh uh by looking at the type of uh dust that uh uh that's up there that they've managed to sample. And that's very different from the dust down near Earth level where we have oodles of uh natural dust and also also uh industrial uh output creates um smoke and particulates uh of all sorts uh down in the lower ones. But the upper ones, it's actually meteor and comet dust that the water vapor uh condenses out on to. So as I mentioned, uh, sometimes they're very subtle. You can see in this uh panorama here, there's just a little bit here. Uh, again, the lower uh cloud um is dark and this is uh very much how it looks to the eye. Uh, late twilight uh is often uh the best time to have uh the best contrast out there. Sometimes they're quite subtle. Uh, but the good news is that it's, they're very easy to take pictures of. You can use your smartphone. Uh, of course DSLRs are uh a bit better. They generally have a bit more functionality for the uh low-light situations, but smartphones are getting better and better every year and you can actually hand-hold them and they have uh uh anti-vibration uh software uh inside them to uh steady the view, but uh basically uh it's, But basically, it's it's best if you lean on a wall or a fence on top of a car rooftop to try and keep the camera as still as possible. If you have set the countdown timer on, all the phones have these countdown timers. And if you can figure out, have a look at your camera manual or find a YouTube about how to fiddle around with the nighttime settings for your camera. Usually, you just have to keep swiping away at the at the gear utility section on your camera software app, and you'll eventually find night mode. And so if you can switch it to manual, not all phones allow this, but some do, bump up the ISO to make sure that it is getting a good dynamic range. And the other thing that's really critical is the focus. Usually, there's a thing that either lets you do, of course, automatic, but it'll either be flowers to do macro shots, or it'll have some mountains for distant panoramas. And that's really important because smartphones are basically designed for daytime people or for taking pictures of people. So the autofocus will have a really, really rough time focusing on an almost blank sky. So if you can find that little gear utility to force the focus out to the mountains at infinity, then your shots are gonna be that much better. So just keep shooting away. Now, noctiluscent clouds are very thin compared to the regular earthbound clouds where we have a lot, lot more humidity to condense out and form the clouds. And they're very transparent, so much so that the noctiluscent clouds can be there during the day. You just don't see them because they're that thin. And it turns out that the contrast against the sky is the real key to all of this. So for example, in this picture, again, single exposure of downtown, just using the the night mode setting on a camera, and you'll capture noctiluscent clouds. If you can see them with your eyes, you can take a picture of them. But thi- this is the real part of the noctiluscent clouds that that was there. And then what I did was I did a small screen grab copy of this section of it. And then I pasted it on top of different parts of the sky. If you paste it over a spot that's very dark away from the the twilight, you'll notice that, oh, well, much easier to see there. And then as I move the section further and further into the lighter zone, the clouds almost disappear. So it's all about getting that right level of contrast. So the the big question that most people will ask, well, will there be any tonight? And so there's a, the the short answer is, who knows? The only way to do it is actually go and look. That's not quite true, which I'll explain in a moment. But spaceweather.com has an image that shows the current noctiluscent cloud or polar mesospheric clouds, as they're also known, over the the hemisphere. And these, it's called a daisy because of course this looks like a flower. But this is not a snapshot like you would normally get for a satellite image showing weather clouds. Instead, the spacecraft only takes a narrow strip. So this would be one strip here. It orbits through and comes out the other side, then wraps around, comes back, gets another sort of pedal, orbits through, comes down the other side. And so it actually takes an entire day to map out the northern sky. And so if you see something like this, you think, oh, it's, it looks like it's just upstream of us. Well, that might have actually been almost 21 hours ago, so it may not actually be there now. The other thing that's tricky about this thing is these daisies are about three days behind in being posted. So they're really of almost no use whatsoever. And certainly as a predictor, as will I see one tonight? No, it's just not useful at all. The other thing that's very tricky, and it's all due to perspective. And that's one of the things, if you look back or remember that diagram that I showed, where the the cross-section of the earth extended off to the north, out to the right. You can actually do a fairly straightforward, simple geometry and say, well, where is the horizon? If I'm at Edmonton here, where is my horizon? And it turns out that your horizon is, for noctiluscent clouds, is about eight and a half to nine degrees north. So anything beyond 62 degrees north, you are not going to see. So the the entire polar region may be just completely filled with noctiluscents, but you're not going to see it if they do not extend into this zone in here. And so even really low down, like at 60 degrees north, if they're just here, there are only about two or three degrees up from our perspective. So the you, you really have to have a massive display for it to reach farther south. The other problem with using these sorts of images is we found out that, well, in reality, noctiluscent clouds come as patches quite often at the southern part of the whole polar mesospheric cloud mass. You'll get these little patches. And so if if you're in Scotland here, northern Scotland, oh, yeah, you you'll be able to see this patch. But further over, when when you finally get to Labrador, you can't see it at all. And it's not because the latitude is wrong, it's because, well, this was a patch. And maybe by the time it shifted eastward or westward, pardon me, that it dissolves, just like cirrus clouds dissolve and form. So there's really no easy way of knowing. And so the only reliable way of finding out if there's noctiluscent clouds tonight is to look at the astro email list where Mike Noble posts stuff. But as you know, even then, sometimes it's like, oh, they're they're just coming out or they're really faint. But if it's a nice display, this is the place where you'll get it. You can find some of these on weather cams for, if you check the airport weather cams in northern Ontario and central Manitoba, if they've got noctiluscent clouds for the the current evening, then there's a pretty good chance you'll see them here. And there should be, yeah, there it is. I've got to click on the invisible movie. There we go. And so here's an example of noctiluscent clouds where there is nothing at at 11:00 PM. And it's like, oh, that's a pity. And then as I was just about to leave, they reappear, they appeared slowly. Unfortunately, this is low resolution, not quite sure why. But here they are down in this low down to the horizon here. Normal clouds coming across are dark, except those lit up by light pollution. And so here's an example of noctiluscent clouds making an appearance. And the flow is actually from from east to west up at the up in the mesosphere. Generally, sometimes it can actually push south. But and then, as you can see here, it just dissipates. It doesn't continue on. So sometimes you can have a fantastic display in the evening and you think, oh, set my alarm and go out in the morning at dawn and nothing, or vice versa. Well, there's nothing tonight, so I'm not gonna set my alarm. And then you hear about how fantastic the display was because it's this whole new patch that came in. So one of the things that I did to help myself was create a webpage and some, did a little math behind the scenes. For if you're anywhere else in on the planet, you can throw in your different latitude and longitude, but it defaults to Edmonton. You hit this evening and it generates this table. And the the key part of it is that as the season goes on, the time for when they will first really appear in the sky to the time of the best contrast and the overnight period, and again, best contrast at dawn, those change significantly as we head into mid-July. Because you're then, mid-July is a month from the solstice. For the next two weeks, the times don't change that much. But the best contrast is at the time here. And I did put in the date time for tonight. So the best contrast, if you want, if you only have a little bit of time, it's at 11:40 because this is in universal time here, so six hours out. So 11:40 is the best time. The earliest that you're gonna start seeing them is about minus four, and they can cover the entire sky, the maximum altitude here. More than 90 degrees means that it's gone beyond the zenith down towards the south. But one of the key things that really helps you, this this table is to show how quickly the noctiluscent clouds will apparently change altitude from being very high in the sky to dropping to very low. And it's not the clouds themselves that's changing, it's just the fact that the sun is sinking lower and that changes the geometry and that shadow line changes, although it changes fairly uniformly. Our perspective is such that it makes it look like all of a sudden, the noctiluscents just collapse down. But it's just the fact that they're no longer being in sunlight anymore. And then at midnight, for the next couple of weeks, we will have noctiluscent clouds being illuminated in the lowest, just below 10 degrees there. As we get into later July, there's actually a dip where there's a break and that you just really can't see anything unless it's down in the one-degree zone. And so that's where you want to set your alarm. But again, the thing that you've got to be really aware of, and this is where a timetable like this is really helpful, is you think, ah, okay, here's where noctiluscent clouds really jump. And actually, Mark Zalchuk will call it the the jump. And so in this case, it's from 3:10 AM to 3:40. It jumps from just belong beyond 10 degrees, all of a sudden, to possibly right up past the zenith. And so this can occur in 15 minutes. So if you set your alarm for 3:10 and go, oh, there's some really nice stuff there. I better get out. Well, it's it's gonna take you longer than 15 minutes, generally speaking, to get dressed. You might have to get in the car to drive to a spot that's got a nice horizon. So you're gonna make sure you've take that into account as well. And so here is a video that shows this jump or the rise. So hopefully, the quality will be a little better on this one. You just sort of see them climbing higher and higher and higher. There is some motion to the south here, but the lion's share of the is just the illumination higher up. And this one was, we could see noctiluscents all the way down to Jupiter on the southern horizon. It's pretty impressive. And the other big thing is use binoculars. The 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 detail in them is just phenomenal. And which will unfortunately, based on the previous one loop, the quality of this is not gonna be like it is. So in binoculars, you get to see the detail that is just stunning. And it reminds me very much, I have to try that again, I don't know why that jumped here. Reset that if I can. I think I'm gonna have to, let's see, let's try. Sorry, there we go. Let's try this again. So at some point, I remember thinking that this view is very much like a Hubble Space Telescope shot of the Orion Nebula. That just, again, the detail is just goes on and on with all these micro ripples and waves. This is a wonderful display. There we go. Okay, that's all the segment for noctiluscent clouds. So I can take some questions if there are any before going on to making a few announcements. So by all means, unmute yourself if if you have a question.
Alistair, it's my understanding that these weren't even noted as a phenomenon until the late 1800s.
That's right. Yeah, the the first recorded papers were written shortly after the Big Krakatoa eruption. And so some of that, there's actually a fair bit of research and still disagreement on the the how does all that water vapor get up into the upper atmosphere like that? And so it it's one of the interesting things as well, though, similar to how they suddenly appeared. Well, with Krakatoa, that was such, they had fantastic sunsets. So people were really looking at the sky. And if you, if you think about people who report UFOs or weird, especially ice crystal halos, you realize, well, they've always been there, but the people have just have such little experience that they've never really noticed it before. And so, you know, similarly, it's very easy to look at these clouds and just go, oh, that's just cirrus lit by the the sunlight, and I'm not paying any attention to it whatsoever. So they may have been around considerably before the late 1800s. But they certainly showed up there and then people pay began paying a lot more attention. Now, they've also kicked into a lot more gear compared to the 1930s and 40s when they're observing a lot more, and especially the International Physical Year in 57. And lots of people were looking at the sky. They were not as common then as they are now. Now, of course, we have a lot more rocket launches, and so that we're adding water vapor to the upper atmosphere. But there's also some interesting research that talks about just the increase in industrialization, creating a lot of stuff in the lower levels, and eventually that mixes up and through interesting bits of chemistry and air transport makes its way up into the upper atmosphere. So there's just ongoing research for that. So pretty neat things. There's also, sorry, while I'm on on that particular note. Let's hang on here. That the the noctiluscent clouds may be related to the solar cycle, that they're a little more common in the 11-year minima, such that we're like the one we're having now. But again, you look at the graphs and it's it's really not much correlation going on. So that's a pretty tough thing. correlation going on, so that's a pretty tough thing. Okay. There we go. So a couple of announcements coming up. We have an Astro Cafe on Wednesday at seven thirty and we'll be doing a little bit more on noctiluscent clouds and hopefully a little bit on the new Nova that was popped into our sky just the other day. Also, coming up in Wednesday, a week from now, the twenty third, I do an introduction to stargazing along with Berta Beltran. And we help you towards your earning your Explore the Universe certificate. And then there is Jeff Robertson's What's Up in the Sky this month for July seventh. In between, there is the National General Assembly of the Royal Astronomical Society. And the keynote speaker this year, Emily Calendrelli, host of Emily's Wonder Lab. Also in there, talks from astrophysicists, eclipse chasers, there's segments about deep sky preserve, dark sky preserves, pardon me, and there's a Mars Madness panel discussion. So all those talks are available, fifteen dollars for members. And then at the end of the annual general or the general assembly, there is the annual general meeting of the society where any member can sit in on the general meeting. It's free and you can learn a bit more and have your say in how the society operates. So that's coming up. And also, just to finish on the general assemblies, COVID has certainly given us a look at how we might do things differently than we have in the past. If you have ideas on how it might be easier to host and deliver general assemblies, please contact me. You can find me my email on the website for the Edmonton R A C dot com and under the contact us down here in the National Council Representative. And you can send me an email for that. Oh, there it is. And then finally, July seventh, Jeff Robertson does his What's Up in the Sky this month. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your attention. Well, back to you, Tom.
Thank you, Alastair, an excellent presentation. Well done. We're gonna make a couple of mid course corrections to the agenda. I just wanted to segue on those announcements by just advising you of the reopening discussions that we've had at council, given the reopenings on everybody's mind these days as, you know, provincial government has announced staged reopenings and more vaccines are being made available for both first and second shots as my left shoulder is starting to attest at this point. At our meeting, we we heard from from Frank, Frank Florian, who, as most of you know, is the director of the Tellus World of Science on their reopening plans and as well as the continued redevelopment of the Queen Elizabeth Planetarium. And the farmers where we hold our regular monthly meetings and host the observation deck and the ladders where we will be holding our Astro Cafes, observers meetings and other kinds of gatherings. So based on the information received, we decided as follows that assuming all goes well and there are no further contractions, our first in person regular monthly meeting at twos will be on December thirteenth. That'll be the second Monday in December. By then, we hope and expect there'll be no crowd size restrictions and we can securely book out of town speakers. But I should add that the value of this kind of electronic media has been recognized and we'll also begin live streaming these meetings, these in person meetings for those who might find it difficult to attend in person. The observatory, we hope to reopen in late fall. And other gatherings such as the Astro Cafes will remain electronic until the Q E P development is finished and we can start holding them there. And that would, we also hope that would be about the same time as we move back to twos. And finally, we hope to have the Loner Program up and running at some point during phase three of the government's opening plan, which hopefully will be fairly soon. The the executive committee will be monitoring the health environment over the summer since we don't have council meetings over the summer. And if this timetable can be moved up safely, we'll certainly try for it. Maybe this would be a good time for Rick and Susan to talk about the the Northern Prairie Star Party and the accommodations they've had to make as a result of the the COVID situation and the all too gradual lifting of restrictions. So maybe Rick and Susan, I can have you unmute and you can you can chat about it.
Yeah, sorry, before Rick and Susan, before Rick and Susan actually talk, do you mind if we maybe have John do his presentation for the observers meeting? Just because I feel like it was linked with Alastair, but I mean, it's it's up to you.
Okay. Well, Rick's not gonna be, Rick and Susan won't be, won't be very long. I wouldn't think, there'd just be a few minutes. So maybe we can just jump into to John's after that, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, sure, no problem. I was just trying to see, like, try to do a smooth transition thing. But yeah, totally up to you, though, doesn't matter.
We we'd be happy to just give you a quick update, it won't take very long. Over the, over the weekend, we did send out a report to council and to our Northern Prairie Star Party organizing committee with our recommendation that we continue with the reservation of the northern part of the Black Nugget Lake campground for the period over the twenty twenty one N P S P, which is the ninth and tenth, Friday and Saturday, or tenth and night, tenth and eleventh, Friday and Saturday nights. And then for the powered sites, it's also the Thursday night. We have those sites booked right now for our event. And unfortunately, of course, the group site isn't open yet, but we do still have, we have quite a nice waiting list of fifteen or sixteen people who've already indicated. And we would certainly, if you're interested in in having a site during those times, just send us an email and we'll put you on the list. We expect that the powered sites will become available probably within the next three or four weeks and then we can reallocate. But right now, we've got everybody who wants a site allocated if the powered sites are open and if the powered sites are open. So we're going to recommend, we're dark sky observing. It's a great opportunity for members to get together in camp. And but what we have recommended is that we not have the big tents, we not have the big barbecue and we not have invited speaker presentations, anything that potentially could draw a crowd for which there could be some limitations. And there also could be some concerns by some members even even in it's early September. So we're we're pretty close to the end of what we hoped was going to be the end, but we really don't know yet. So that's what we're recommending. And what we're saying instead is between now and early September, we we have a whole bunch of us that are really interested in sharing what we're doing and and providing information on a in a small group setting. And we're really good at this with the Astro Cafe and the observers group and everything. Let's get our, let's get a bunch of things together and we can, as members, organize.
Self organize.
Self for self organize and we can have small groupings as as campers out there. And whatever the COVID restrictions of the day are, we we're more sure that we will probably be able to follow what reasonably will be in place then, rather than organizing an event which might draw seventy five or more people for whom we have to start thinking about vaccine passports and and where do you live and all this kind of thing. So and and actually, Tom, I didn't know what your, what what the council had decided about reopening for meetings at twos. I thought maybe we might be meeting in September at twos. But that makes sense. And in the context of what you've already looked at, reasonably speaking, I think it's probably the safe way to go. That being said, we talked to Mark Waldman today. Mark is an optical engineer. He is going to be involved with the commissioning of the James Webb and it is scheduled to go up October thirty first. He thinks there may be a slight delay in that. And so, Tom, we'll work with you to see if we can, in fact, have Mark talk at one of our meetings and and basically be able to address many more members and probably would come out on a cool Saturday afternoon at Black Nugget Lake. And that's pretty much what we wanted to report. And we'll put it on the website and we'll send it out on the Astro list and on the members' list as we get moving on it. But really looking forward to people want to get together in safe way, the small group way to go with no big tent really seemed to be the way to go. And for the club right now, it means we're not going to be putting out an expense that we might not be able to get a deposit back on.
I think basically we're all having to deal with what I call the COVID fog and it's not easy to see very far ahead.
Exactly.
Any questions, comments? And also, if you have, as members and new members and people that are already indicating they're coming, if there are things that you would like to have get togethers about, like you'd like Alastair to talk more about something or other members that you already know are are experts in certain areas, send us an email and we'll make sure that we can organize around something like that as well. But we are looking forward to pretty good certainty that we will be able to see each other in person in some way or another and and have a really great time out there. Any questions, comments or anything?
All right, thanks for that. Much appreciated. And now we'll throw it over to John.
Yep, everyone can hear me, okay?
Yep.
Oh, excellent. Okay, I will start to share. All right. So thank you for having me on this. Nice tie in with Rick and Susan that people can start on their visual observing certificates when they're out at Northern Prairie Star Party or whatever we'd like to call it. I am John Stolti. I am the observing group director for the Edmonton Centre of RASK. I wanted to talk today about the intermediate visual observing certificates. The rask.ca has the certificates listed and all the observing lists are in the handbook as well as online through rask.ca. So the intermediate ones, one I'm actually working on right now, the Messier Catalogue, which most of you I'm sure have looked at, but might be a good reason to formalize that they've seen as many not comets as they possibly can. The Finest NGC Objects was put together by Alan Dyer, who I think I saw was attending. I don't know if he's still there, but Alan put this together a while ago as being the fill in for the Messier Catalogue, which is also a hundred and ten deep sky objects. Most of these require a eight inch, two hundred millimeter plus telescope to observe, probably from a dark site. Oh, yeah, there's Alan in the chat. I'm looking at my screen, that's full screen and then secret's right beside me. So forgive me if I'm looking to the side once in a while. We also have the Isabel Williamson Lunar Observing Program, which is more thorough than the Explore the Moon Program that many of you have already done and maybe some of you are working towards. So you'll need a little bit bigger of a telescope than the Explore the Moon first one, six inch. And there's also the double star certificate, which double stars are great if you can't get out to a dark site. So you don't need super dark skies or even during the summer when it doesn't get dark here. Maybe you can take in some double stars. How to submit your application after you've done this? There are lists already brought in on rask.ca that you can print out and fill out or make an observing list or do drawings or, you know, the, I probably will be pretty flexible with what's there. But once you've got that all taken together, you can click on this link that is above the astro imaging corner certificate part. So click on that, that'll send me an email and I can look it over and possibly deputize someone else to help me look it over. And then you'll get a pin for some of them, a certificate for others. And I will be presenting them at the meeting sometime. Maybe we can even be in person for them, but for now, over Zoom and then it'll be sent to you. Oh. The RASK put together this little video on the the observing program. So I thought I'd play that as well. I clicked on it again, sorry.
In this second video, we'll look at the three intermediate level observing programs, the Messier Catalogue, the Finest NGCs and the Isabel Williamson Lunar Observing Program. These programs will build on what you've already learned in the Explore the Universe program, but you may need a mid sized telescope like this Dobsonian or this large refractor to complete the program. The R A C will issue a certificate to any RASK member who completes these programs. You'll also get a colorful lapel pin. Details for all the programs can be found online. See the video notes for details. First, we're going to talk about the Messier Catalogue Observing Program. Charles Messier was a comet hunter who lived about two hundred years ago. He started finding and recording the faint fuzzy objects he saw in the sky that could be mistaken for comets. The Messier Catalogue has grown to a hundred and ten deep sky objects. Most of these are star clusters and galaxies, but the list also includes several of the brightest nebulae. Some of these can be found in binoculars and small telescopes, but most require a medium sized telescope. To observe all the objects in the Messier Catalogue, a dark sky observation site will be required. The Messier Catalogue can be found in the R A C's Observers Handbook and many other books and guides. At this point in your stargazing career, consider investing in a good star atlas or downloading software such as Stellarium, which is free. On the R A C website, you will find a downloadable list with observing report forms. There are two versions of the Messier List Observing Certificate. Make your choice between a traditional star hopping program and a computer aided go to version. When you're finished, present your logbook to your local R A C center for validation and they will issue you your certificate and pin. The next program we're going to talk about is called the Finest NGCs. About a hundred and thirty years ago, John Dyer produced a comprehensive catalog of deep sky objects, the New General Catalogue of Nebula and Star Clusters, or NGC for short. The list covers the entire sky and includes fainter objects than those in the Messier Catalogue. In nineteen eighty, RASK member Alan Dyer picked the best a hundred and ten objects in the northern hemisphere, naming them the Finest NGCs. These are mostly galaxies, nebulae and some star clusters. This observing program is a little more challenging than the Messier Catalogue. You definitely need a medium sized telescope and you'll also need a dark observing site. The R A C website includes a list of the finest NGC objects with observing report forms. There are two versions of the Finest NGC Observing Certificate, one for traditional star hopping and another for computer aided go to telescopes. When you're finished, present your When you're finished, present your logbook to your local RASC centre for validation and they will issue your certificate and pin. Finally, we have the Isabel Williamson Lunar Observing Program. Isabel Williamson was active in the RASC Montreal Centre and the driving force behind observing programs in the nineteen forties to the nineteen sixties. She often tasked beginner observers with observing the moon and drawing their own lunar maps. In two thousand and six, the RASC introduced the comprehensive Isabel Williamson Lunar Observing Program in her honor. More challenging than our beginner program, Explore the Moon, you definitely need a mid-sized telescope. But you don't need a dark sky observing site, making this the perfect backyard observing project. There are a hundred and thirty-five mandatory objectives and sub-objectives, including craters, lunar seas, mountains, and many fine surface features. There are hundreds of observations in all and optional challenge observations for extra distinction. On the RASC website, you'll find a comprehensive guide and observing forums. When you're finished, present your logbook to your local RASC centre for validation and they'll issue you your certificate and pin. So that's it for the intermediate level observing programs. Be sure to watch the other two videos in the series where I tell you about the beginner and advanced observing programs that the RASC offers. Don't forget, the stars belong to everyone.
There you have it, uh and a little bit of a teaser for possibly what the next uh observing program I'll be talking about or list of observing programs. Uh any questions or comments?
All right. Well, thank you, John. It's always good to get certificates, bring honor and glory to the center, so let's get after it. Jeff sent me a note that Milky Way Days is also off. And Jeff, where where is that?
That's it, Elk Island in the Beaver Hills Dark Sky Celebration. We've done it, well, until last year. Uh every Sunday of Labor Day uh for for many, many years and I was talking to the Parks Canada people and I said, you know, what do you think? Cause if we were going to do it, I'd have to, you know, we'd have to get get going on it. You know, normally if we were meeting in person, I'd be handing out the clipboard, getting uh volunteering or getting people to volunteer for uh that event, but of course uh they did uh let me know, no, they're gonna have the best ever Milky Way Day in twenty twenty-two.
Hey, hey.
Hey, hey. Hopefully it doesn't rain.
Hopefully it doesn't rain. That would not be the best ever.
Well, no, no, I was just uh making fun of our fearless provincial leader.
Gotcha. Um, all right. Well, then we'll we'll move it over to Abdur for astro imaging favorites. Let me just say first of all, however, that our Abdur, and we're going to always keep you as our Abdur, even if you move to Calgary. He decided he would submit an image of Messier fifty-one to the Sky News Photo of the Week Contest. First time he's ever decided to submit something and he got honorable mention. Um and uh, you know, that's just fantastic and I just want to give uh give Abdur all the credit in the world. Congratulations.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, by the way, speaking of uh photo of the week for the magazine, I recommend uh, you know, there are quite a few really, really good images of the center, so I recommend you know, anybody who wants to submit one should submit their photo to Sky News Magazine. I think the ye- the end of the year is June, so you can submit the submit your images anytime throughout the year, so there are also prizes that you can win uh if your image gets selected at the end, so yeah, go for it and send some in. Okay.
Do you have screen sharing there, Abdur? Do you want me to give it to you?
Nope, not yet.
Okay. There you go.
Ah, perfect. Thank you very much. Okay. So just going to pull up the presentation here. Okay, I'll share my screen first. Okay, awesome. There it is. Make that full screen. Okay, can everyone see that all right?
Looks good.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Okay. So uh yeah, Astro Imaging Corner is uh the section of the uh regular meeting where we share all the images that uh that you know, the people had sent in. And this time we decided to do something a little bit different. Instead of asking people to submit recent images that they'd taken, uh we decided we were gonna have a special edition of Astro Imaging Corner. And I'd requested uh the members to send in any images uh that any five images that were their favorites or that they think were their best images of of all time, so they didn't have to be recent. And uh the response was absolutely overwhelming. I I got a lot of entries from a lot of people and some amazing images in here, so I feel like we should make this a staple, maybe once a year or once every two years, we should have this special edition of Astro Imaging Corner where people can submit any images from, you know, whenever they've taken them, uh any any top five favorite images. So uh since I received quite a few entries, um I'm going to forego some of the technical details on these images just so we can share all of them, otherwise we'll be here for a very long time. And uh, okay, we'll get started. And for anyone who might be joining us for the first time, you can submit images to uh RASC Astro Imaging Corner at the address up here, that's uh astroimagingcorner@admittonrasc.com and you can find that on the RASC Ed- Edmonton website on the left panel over here. Uh and you can always send those in to me by email as well. So starting off, our first image is from Tom Owen. That's the Horsehead and Flame Nebula. And this is the Andromeda Galaxy from Tom Owen. And you can see the uh the two little galaxies, the M thirty-three, uh sorry, M thirty-two and one of the NGCs. And this was uh Tom's first image ever. This is the Orion Nebula and this was taken in December twenty fourteen. And this is from Tom. This is Messier sixty-five and sixty-six. They are two parts of the Leo triplet. Uh and you can see how disturbed this lower galaxy is over here from the gravitational interactions with the other two galaxies in the group. And lastly, this is another one from Tom. This is called Pickering's Triangle and the Western Veil. It's part of the Veil Nebula Complex in Cygnus. Where's the chat? Oh, awesome. Thank you, Sukrit. Yeah, those are, there's quite amazing, Tom. Great job on that. Okay, our next image here is from Doug Huub. Uh this is an image of Steve taken at the Saskatchewan Summer Star Party in two thousand and five. Uh and back then Steve didn't actually have a name. Uh I guess it was just considered part of the Aurora. And it wasn't until many, many years later that uh someone from the Calgary area, I believe, named it Steve and that name stuck. And uh here's another uh another very, very nice image of Steve. You can see the ribbon crossing the Milky Way, so amazing work, Doug. That's that's uh just fabulous. And the next image here is uh from Yusuf Hossein. Uh this is the Pelican Nebula, IC five zero seven zero. Uh very, very nice detail in there, great colors and processing as well. And this one was taken with the Skywatcher Aspiric ED one twenty and an ASI sixty-two hundred mm full frame camera. And this is another one from Yusuf. This is the Elephant Trunk Nebula, actually, and if you look right near the central over here, you can see the Keyhole Nebula. Uh that's actually been on my list for a very long time as well. I just have not gotten around to imaging it either, but it's a beautiful object for for imaging and very, very large, so you can actually image it with just a lens and a DSLR camera as well. You don't even need a telescope. Uh it's a fabulous image, Yusuf. And that's a wider view of the Elephant Trunk Nebula. You can see the keyhole right over here and then uh the rest of the nebula complex all around. So great job, Yusuf. And our next uh image over here is from Rick Bram. Uh this is the solar surface and you can see a lot of prominences along the edge, so I'm guessing this must have been from Solar Maximum. I missed the last Solar Maximum, basically the entire entire Solar Maximum, so I'm definitely looking forward to seeing views like this in the future. We're we're going to be approaching Solar Maximum soon in a few years, so looking forward to that. Uh this next one is from Rick Bram. This is a a full solar eclipse and you can actually see some of the prominences off the side of the sun over there as well, just peeking out from behind the moon. Great shot, Rick. And this is the transit of Venus. I believe this was the twenty twelve transit. Uh but you can see Venus absolutely massive crossing the solar uh surface. And um I I was lucky enough to be able to see this as well, uh just through those those little uh little glasses with no magnification, but uh the next one's not going to happen for a while. I believe the next one's uh twenty-one seventeen, so I might miss that one. And uh you can see some of the sunspots on the surface as well, so uh amazing once in a lifetime image, Rick. And another one from Rick. This is uh a solar eclipse, but the moon at this point was quite a bit closer uh to the earth than normal, so it didn't manage to cover the entire solar surface. So that's how you end up with this uh this beautiful ring around the moon. And another one from Rick. This is the full solar disk and you can see massive prominence leaping off the surface around the sunspots over here. And our next image is from Alan Hobbs. Uh this is the portion of the solar eclipse known as the Diamond Ring, or at least that's what I call it because it looks exactly like a diamond ring. Uh it's when the sun is just starting to to come out from behind the moon again and uh forms this beautiful diamond ring shape. Uh and this one was shot in twenty seventeen at Douglas, Wyoming. And this next one is from Alan. This is uh Messier thirty-one, the Andromeda Galaxy, and this one was shot with a Rasa eight and the ASI twenty-six hundred MC camera. So I did a great job capturing the hydrogen alpha regions there, Alan. And next one from Alan Hobbs. This is Messier forty-two, the Orion Nebula. And this one was taken with a Rasa eight and the ASI twenty-six hundred MC as well. And right above the Orion Nebula here, you can see the Running Man Nebula as well. Our next image was sent in by uh by Mark. This is the uh NLC. Uh date unknown of this one, but uh this is what Alistair was talking about earlier. You can just just barely make out the the blue color of the NLC there. And these are the very, very nice electric blue NLCs. This is an image from July twenty eleven. And then this one here from July nineteen eighty-eight. You can see the ripples in the NLC I up there. And this one, I believe, is from uh June, end of June or beginning of July nineteen eighty-four. And this was actually Mark's first photo of the NLC, so uh great job for a first photo. And lastly, this is another view of the NLC. Uh you can see the the ripples uh really, really high up in the atmosphere there, so uh really nice colors. Uh so our next image here is from Murray Paulson. As a lot of you might have uh heard on the astro list there, uh Murray went on a on an epic quest to image this eclipse. This was a twenty-two hundred kilometer forty-eight hour trip to northeast Saskatchewan. Uh that's dedication and Murray was at Shaffer Lake, uh which had its long axis conveniently aligned with the sunrise direction. And this location was inside the line of maximum eclipse after sunrise. And Murray shot this image with a Canon ADD and a seventy to two hundred F four lens at two hundred millimeters. And uh he could just just caught the the horns of the eclipse there, so uh you know, the the moon isn't covering the sun completely, but you can see the horizon cutting both off at the at the bottom right there and some clouds in the way. Uh so I'm glad uh glad your long trip was not in vain and you managed to capture the eclipse. A great job, Murray. Our next one is from Murray. This is Comet uh Hayak, Hayatake. I am really, really bad at pronouncing this name. I've got to figure out how to say it properly. Hayatake. I think from nineteen ninety-six. Uh looks like an absolutely beautiful comet from all the pictures that I've seen. Uh that is a very, very nice tail there. And this is Murray's image of Comet Halebop uh from nineteen ninety-seven, so that's two amazing comets one year apart. Uh that must have been a lucky year and you can see the dust tail on the right and the ion tail on the left, so both going in different directions. And this is a an image of the lunar eclipse from two thousand and three that Murray took. And this is uh an image of the solar prominences from two thousand and five. And this was actually a single image, believe it or not, uh no stacking involved there. Uh so splendid detail on the solar surface. You can see the sunspot right here, some giant prominence is leaping off the off the solar limb. So amazing job there. And this is Murray's image of the transit of Venus. Uh you can see some sunspots over there as well. And this was from twenty twelve. And lastly, this is Murray's image of the North America Nebula. And up next is uh the submission from Ray Weems. This is uh oh, sorry, one more from Murray over here. So this is uh a lunar eclipse, not a solar eclipse. I uh mistitled that one, so uh it's a nice shot of of a lunar eclipse. Okay, this next one here is from Ray. This is the uh Aurora, the Northern Lights. And one more from Ray, so very nice colors. You've got some greens, some purples underneath, so very nice shot there. Our next shot is from Arnold Rivera. This is the uh another shot of the Diamond Ring actually during a full solar eclipse. And you can see a prominence just uh just out the left side over here. And this uh is at contact four. And this is a midpoint of the solar eclipse uh and uh Arnold was trying to capture most of the of the corona, the solar atmosphere in this shot. And this is the uh transit of Venus from uh June two thousand and four from Crete, Greece. And this was actually the first transit of Venus since December six eighteen eighty-two. Uh so that's, yeah, that's a very lucky capture, so uh amazing job there. And there's Venus in mid-transit and you can actually also see a tiny little sunspot over here and this is the transit of uh from two thousand and four. Up next, we have uh an an image of the setting sun from Arnold and you can see the green flash right over there. Uh these are extremely rare and extremely hard to capture because uh it's just you, the conditions need to be perfect for that to happen. Uh and these are caused by atmospheric refraction, so uh I'm still hoping to see that green spot uh or that green glint of sunlight uh one day, but I've had no luck so far. And this is the annual solar eclipse of May twenty twelve from uh while we overlooked in Page Arizona. And this is actually a recent capture uh from uh twenty twenty-one. Uh I believe this was March twenty twenty-one. Uh Arnold and a few uh others uh were, I believe, a little bit uh around South Edmonton trying to capture the International Space Station. Uh so definitely one of the best images I've ever seen of uh the ISS passing the moon, so very, very sharp, perfect focus. Uh so great job, Arnold. And this one was taken with the AP uh back one. Yeah, it was taken with the AP one oh five and the ZWO ASI one seventy-four monochrome camera. And this next image was sent in by Sharon. Uh this is a photo of the Mars Occultation from February eighteen twenty twenty. And this took place around six AM and it was about minus twenty-five degrees Celsius at the time. And uh Sharon did this with a Canon seventy D camera, the Sigma eighteen to two fifty lens at two hundred and fifty millimeters. So you can see Mars just off the right side of the crescent moon here, so very nice. And this is the conjunction of twenty twenty. Uh you can see Saturn with the rings just up top here and Jupiter right underneath it and you can see all four moons of Jupiter, so from uh left to right, there are Callisto, Ganymede, Io, and Europa. So from left to right, there are Callisto, Ganymede, Io, and Europa. The conjunction, when it took place, all these planets were very, very low near the horizon. I was there at the time looking at them. So I remember how hard it was to capture them that, that close to the ground. So great job, Sharon. Okay, so up next, we've got a couple of images, a couple of timescapes, actually, from the Master of Timescapes and Resident A Pod winner, Luca Vanzilla. And this is our first image. This is titled Full Cold Moonrise. And this was a time lapse of 30 minutes total over downtown Edmonton. And you can see the color of the moon change as it rises. So from a dark red to going towards white. And this next one from Luca, this is the total lunar eclipse. And this is a combination of two hours of total exposures. And you can see the color of the sky change as well as the eclipse progresses. This next one from Luca, this one is the winter solstice sun arc. And this was a total of an entire day, actually, of images. And this is the winter solstice sun arc. So amazing amount of planning went into this. But it looks like the results were worth it. And this next one is the Sunset Azimuth Sweep, a combination of six months of exposures. That's, that's real dedication. Just remembering where you set your tripod up last time. So really, really nice shot. And you can also see the seasons changing as the, as the image progresses. And the next one is the solar analemma over Edmonton from Luca. And you can see the sun making this, this odd-shaped loop. And this was a total of one entire year of solar images. So thank you for sharing, Luca. Those are some awesome shots. Up next, we have some shots from Bruce McCurdy. This is N L C over Edmonton skyline. This is from July 2019. And this sequence was taken with a Canon 5D Mark II full frame camera and a 24-millimeter lens. And you can see the N L C covering a huge swath of the sky over downtown Edmonton. Very, very nice shot, Bruce. And next, we've got a couple from Warren Finley. This is titled "The Aboriginal Milky Way", and this was shot in the Australian Outback with a Canon 60 full frame camera and an Astro Track mount with a 15-millimeter Canon Fish Eye lens. And Warren says that this shot took a lot of planning. He spent five nights waiting for clear skies near the location, had to drive really bad outback roads to get to the site where the sculpture is located in the middle of nowhere. And Warren says he was quite worried his vehicle would get bogged down in the deep sand that occurred on the road, or that he'd hit a kangaroo while driving back in the dark. It's an Australian problem, hitting a kangaroo. We only have to worry about moose and elk over here. But it looks like the results were worth it. It is the small and the large magellanic clouds. And this next one is Aurora over an old homestead. And this was shot in Beaver Hill Lake on an Icon D700 camera and the 11-14-millimeter lens at 14 millimeters. And Warren says he chose it because the foreground building collapsed soon after getting this shot. So there's no going back to try to get this shot again. Very nice. And this next one is the Messier Bi-Marathon from Warren. And this was shot in Maui during the middle of his Messier Bi-Marathon, where he observed all the Messieres and ran a marathon in one night. I think doing any one of those things on its own is quite hard. So I don't know how you manage to do both. And this was also shot with a Canon 60 and an Astro Track mount and a 12-millimeter lens. And our next image here is the Northern Lights on Ice by Warren. And this one was shot at Black Nugget Lake while laying on the ice. And Warren says he had to wait for just the right ice conditions to get this one. And this image actually won Best Tripod Mounted Unguided Photo in the Sky News Annual Competition. That was a well-deserved win. Very nice. And the last shot from Warren, this one is called Runway to the Heavens. This was shot on the tarmac of Lizard Island Airport in Australia with the same Canon 60 and a 15-millimeter lens. And Warren says he chose it because it took a lot of planning to put this photo in place. And he vividly remembers being swarmed by mosquitoes while getting this shot. And also, this shot won the Sky News Grand Prize Photo of the Year. Another well-deserved win. And now we have a couple of solar images from Jay Lavender. And this is from the solar eclipse of 2014. And Jay shot this one with the Lund 60-millimeter double stack hydrogen alpha refractor and a Canon T2i DSLR. And yes, the special thing about these images is that they're prime focus, single images only, no stacking whatsoever, and they're processed in Adobe Creative Suite 4. And that, that is a massive, I guess they're not really called prominences when they're on the, on the solar surface. But wow, that is, that is absolutely huge. So I'm guessing that was near solar maximum as well. And you can see the moon just, just crossing in front of the sun there. And this next one is also from 2014. This is some, there's a lot of solar prominences, actually. It's amazing. And this is another solar prominence from Jay. You can just see that being shot off the surface of the sun there. And our next image is from Josephine. This is Comet NeoWise. I believe that is Elk Island National Park there and some N L Cs. So managed to get N L Cs and Comet NeoWise in the same shots. Very, very nice. The next shot over here is actually one of mine. So this is the shot of the Whirlpool Galaxy. And I selected this as one of my top five favorites, just because I've been trying to image this galaxy for as long as I can remember. I started off trying with a point and shoot, and I couldn't even see a smudge. But I think I finally, finally got a shot that I can, I can stop at now and stop trying to image this same galaxy every single time, every single year. So this was a total of nine hours of exposures, combination of exposures from my ASI 1600 and my Fuji DSLR camera. So that's where the color data came from. And this was with an 8-inch reflector. And, oh yeah, one other interesting thing about this image is that there are these two faint galaxies, but just off to the edge over here, there's a very, very faint quasar that I believe that was about eight billion light-years away. And you can see galaxies down to magnitude 21 or 22 in this image. So probably my deepest image ever. And this next one is one of mine as well. This is the Cygnus Wall in Cygnus. So this is the bottom part of the North America Nebula. And this was with the ASI 1600 and an 8-inch reflector. And this is one of my other favorites. This is an ice, a lighthouse in Iceland that we went to visit. And surprisingly, the Northern Light showed up out of nowhere. It wasn't really expected at that time. And I believe that's the planet Mars there, closer to the horizon that we saw at the time. And as luck would have it, a meteor also streaked by on the top right over here. So I only noticed that afterwards when I was looking at the images. So you can see the greens and the purples, and it was, it was quite an interesting night. And the next image is also, this is one of my more recent ones. This was from, from this year, I believe. And this is the International Space Station. It's going right in front of the moon. And this was completely on track on a photo tripod that I'd mounted my C8 on. That was a mistake, but I was still able to get enough useful data to make this image. And you can see the solar panels on the International Space Station and a couple of the modules over here. And my last image, this is Mars at opposition in October 2020. I was just happy to be able to capture the poles and some of the details on the surface over here. And this is the Valles Marinaris, the Grand Canyon on Mars. I believe it's what, 2,000 kilometers long or so? So I was, I was pretty happy to capture that. And this was with a C11 Edge at F30 and my ASI 1600 monochrome camera. And yeah, that's the end of this presentation. So a huge thank you to everybody who sent in all the images. And, you know, I do look forward to seeing a lot more in the future. We have a lot of very, very talented imagers in the Edmonton R A S C Center. So, yeah, I look forward to seeing a lot more pictures in the future. And you guys have done some absolutely amazing work. And yep, that's the end. So back to you, Tom. I'm going to stop sharing the screen here. There we go.
Thank you, Abdur. Yeah, let's give everybody who was on there a great hand. And I personally find seeing these images very inspiring. And we all know how difficult it is to take these images and how much dedication it takes. And again, we need all the inspiration we can get so we can keep doing it. All right, I think we've come to the end of our program and, and our, our meeting. I want to thank everybody for attending. I wish everybody a safe and happy summer. And I look forward to getting together with everyone again in the fall. So clear skies, everybody.